I'll continue with reading the Sunshine Law Statement. Adequate notice of this organization meeting setting for time, date, and location has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act on January 7th, 2019 by prominently posting a copy of the bulletin board in the lobby of the offices of the Board of Education, which is public place reserved for such announcements, transmitting a copy of this notice to the record, the Wayne today, and the municipal clerk. Could please rise for a flag salute and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As the general public intends may know, this is an organization meeting. There is a little bit of a new twist this year. We updated our bylaw, which will allow for a written ballot process where we will share individual ballots with each individual board member. But I'm going to go over that whole process after we do the oaths, so that the board is going to be seated and then can take action. So what we'll do is we'll call individuals up by alphabetical order. So we have Mr. Bubba, Mrs. Kumar, and Mrs. Putup. So if I can please ask the mayor to join Mr. Bubba and his wife in the front of the meeting place to swear him in, please.
I think you can hear me now. Before we do this, and by the way, it's an absolute honor and pleasure for me to be here to swear in members of the Board of Education. For those of you seated behind me, please excuse my back for just a second, but I want to thank you on behalf of the township for all that you do for the township. I know the money is great and the hours are extremely long, and let me just say that again. There is no pay for members of the Board of Education. They volunteer their time to our community. I had the honor of serving nine very long years on the Board of Education before joining the municipal side and seeing the light much better on Valley Road than Ellis Drive. But these people are here every night working for our children, and there's nothing finer than taking care of our kids. I hope they're appreciated as much as I appreciate them and by the rest of the community. So for all you do, thank you very much. Many times I've had the opportunity to speak about our school system, and as recently as yesterday during my State of the Township speech, I proclaim that we have an excellent school system here in Wayne Township, and that's the reason why people move to Wayne. So if I've said it once, I've said it 50 times now. It's all about you. It's all about the teachers that we have, the administration, and it's a great system. That's why people move to Wayne Township. So Michael, please raise your right hand. There we go. And repeat after me. I, Michael Bubba, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government's establishment in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. So help me God. Further, I, Michael Bubba, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of a Board of Education, am not disqualified as a voter, pursuant to RS 19:4-1, am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A12-1, and I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all of the duties of that office according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
By the way, I have performed over 500 weddings.
I have sworn in probably 100 police officers, done promotions. This oath of office is much more complicated than anything I've ever used before.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mrs. Kumar, if you could join Mrs. Kazan as well as your husband. Thank you.
I, Duong Kumar, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government's established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. So help me God. I, Duong Kumar, do solemnly swear or affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of a Board of Education, am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to, you can read it, RS 194-1, am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
It's going to be one-stop shopping, huh? We just need the oath. Not that one. Mr. Putup was supposed to be with us tonight, but I know where he is. He's riding in an ambulance right now going on an emergency call for the first aid squad. I'm going to take this one. I do not have this one memorized. Too many colons. Mr. Duffy is going to play the role of Mr. Putup. Please repeat after me. I, Suzanne Putup, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government's established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. So help me God. Further, I, Suzanne Putup, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of a Board of Education, am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 194-1, am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A12-1. That's not even an SAT word. And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all of the duties of that office according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. You going to take a picture?
Absolutely.
Congratulations. Have a great year, and you know we're right here if you need us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year.
I'll be taking the roll call as a newly installed Board of Education, starting with Mrs. Albanese.
Here.
Mr. Bubba.
Here.
Mr. Duffy.
Here.
Mr. Giordano.
Here.
Mrs. Kazan.
Here.
Mrs. Kumar.
Here.
Mr. Pavlak.
Here.
Mrs. Putup.
Here.
And Mrs. Shear.
Here.
Thank you. So as I alluded to in my opening comment, we do have a new bylaw or district policy related to board officers. The first reading was over the summer, specifically on the October 17th, 2019 agenda. Second reading was in November 14th, 2019, both as emergent items, which put forth a process where we will nominate both president and vice president a little differently than we have in the past. We will be utilizing a prepared ballot, and it'll be required, a second will be required in the change. So if I could go over right before we do that, at least what's in front of you. As board members, you have a copy of the agenda. You have a copy of the final district policy, which is 0152 in front of you, in case you had any questions. You have paper ballot for the board president, and you have paper ballot for the board vice president if there's going to be multiple votes. We do have my assistant, Ms. Ginny DeMarco, will be assisting me, hand out additional paper ballots as we go through the process. So that'll be part. And any questions in regard to that as far as process before we proceed? We'll obviously be starting off with the president. I'll be looking for nominations, and then once that closes, I'll then do the same with the vice president position. But do we have any questions or point of clarification at this point? Yes, Mrs. Kazan?
If you elect the president, doesn't the president take the seat and start the meeting?
Well, yeah, the change in the policy was the board secretary, business administrator does both. I can definitely take a pause and let the president sit in the presidential chair, and I can then continue on with the vice president nominations if that seems to be the consensus of the board at this point. Yes?
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, so at this point, I'm going to open up nominations for the presidency.
Mr. Moffett, I nominate Mrs. Albanese.
Second.
Mr. Moffett, I'll nominate Kathy Kazan.
Second.
If I could just catch up. So Mr. Pavlak motions for present Mrs. Albanese, and it was seconded by Mr. Bubba. And Mr. Duffy nominated Mrs. Kazan.
Correct.
And do I have a second on that?
Second.
Mrs. Kumar.
Point of order, Mr. Moffett. I don't believe nominations require a second.
In the new policy, it is required.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other nominations? Seeing none, I will close nominations. Okay, so part of the process is this is going to be one vote for both nominated individuals. You have the ballot in front of you. So what I will ask you to do is if you can complete the one marked election of the board president with the individual you so choose, Mrs. DeMarco will go and collect them, and you will be required to have the board member's signature below on the bottom. The first cast vote is for Mrs. Albanese by Mr. Bubba. The next vote cast is for Mrs. Kazan from Mrs. Putup. Next vote cast is for Mrs. Albanese from Mrs. Albanese. Next vote is for Mrs. Albanese from Mr. Pavlak. Next vote is for Mrs. Albanese, and I'm trying to make out that signature. Is that your writing? Mr. Giordano?
I'm talking to the chief.
Oh, it's all right. Next vote cast for Mrs. Kazan from Miss Kumar. Next vote is for Mrs. Kazan from Mrs. Shear. Next vote is cast for Mrs. Kazan from Mrs. Kazan. And the final vote is for Mrs. Kazan from Mr. Duffy, I'm going to say.
Last one left.
Mrs. Kazan is the board president. I'll take a moment now while you sit into your breath. Yes. Next on the agenda, I will call for nominations for vice presidents, a vice presidency.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
I would gladly like to nominate Suzanne Putup for vice president.
Any other nominations?
Yes, I would like to nominate Mike Bubba for vice president.
Is there a second? Any other nominations? Seeing no nominations, I close the floor. Before you have the next ballot, which is for the election of board vice president, we'll follow the same process. If you can mark the vote cast and sign it at the bottom, please, and Mrs. DeMarco will First vote cast is for Mrs. Putup from Mrs. Kumar. Next vote cast is for Mr. Bubba from Mr. Giordano. Vote cast for Mrs. Putup from Mrs. Putup. Next vote was cast for Mr. Bubba from Mrs. Albanese. Next vote is for Mr. Bubba. Next vote cast for Mr. Bubba. Next one cast for Mrs. Putup from Mrs. Shear. Next one cast is Mrs. Putup from Mrs. Kazan. Final vote cast for Mrs. Putup from Mr. Duffy. Mrs. Putup has become vice president.
Wait for everyone to get situated, and we'll start. I almost missed the chair. Okay, thank you. Congratulations to Mrs. Putup. Thank you very much, and welcome, Mrs. Kumar. We'll get started. Revisions to the agenda item, do we have any, Mr. Moffett?
No, we do not.
Okay. At this moment, we will open to the public on agenda items only. Adequate notice of this organization meeting setting for time, date, and location as provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act on January 7th, 2019 by prominently posting a copy on the bulletin board in the lobby of the offices of the Board of Education, which is a public place reserved for such announcements, transmitting a copy of this to the record, the Wayne today, and the municipal clerk. Can I get a mover for open session?
I move.
Second.
Mrs. Putup, seconded by Mr. Giordano.
Madam President, see no one rise.
On agenda items.
Madam President, see no one rise. I move to court.
Second.
Mr. Pavlak, Mr. Duffy. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the agenda. Administrative items, 1 through 8.
I'll move it.
Can I get a mover?
I'll move it.
Mr. Pavlak, Mrs. Shear.
Excuse me, Miss, Madam President, are we moving all eight?
1 through 8, discussion.
Yes. Subject number two to start. I'd like to move to have the Tap Into Wayne, a recent local online paper, be added to the newspaper of record. In this age of digital news, I think it's important, and after witnessing the reorganization of the town council yesterday, I believe they took the same step.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano.
Could I just have clarification? So what is the action?
To add the Tap Into Wayne, online newspaper, to the newspaper of record.
For electronic.
Electronic. Yeah, digital.
Has the mover, I'll accept the motion.
Discussion on any of the administrative items? Okay.
One more.
Well, I believe we have to start with a roll call on the addition, on the amendment to the agenda, and then the roll call on the rest of the items. Mr. Moffett?
Right, we could go on the amendment. It was accepted by Mr. Pavlak. I could take a vote on the amendment.
So we'll add it to the one roll call.
We could do one.
Very well, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Note in number two, yes to the rest.
Excuse me, are we moving the rest?
Everything.
Well, then, I still have an issue with, yeah, I have an issue with number six if we're moving more. It was my understanding, excuse me, it's my understanding we're only moving to accept the amendment to number two. So if that's the case, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. So you had a second?
I do, I have a second amendment.
Motion to make regarding items 1 through 8?
Yes. Item number six, I'd like to move that we add a shared services committee to our committee handbook. I think that shared services should be, is an important committee that we should have.
Is there a second?
Point of order.
Second. I'm sorry. What's that, Mr. Pavlak?
Mr. Geppert, is that permitted?
Under the bylaws, the standing committees are supposed to be adopted at the organization meeting pursuant to the president's appointment and subject to the board's approval.
So would it be proper to place them into the handbook? I don't believe that's proper.
Well, it should, I mean, if the board votes to do that and the president appoints it, then you can amend the handbook.
We discussed this last year when we had an ad hoc committee, and we were told that we'd have to wait until January in order to make a standing committee addition to the handbook. So I believe this is now the time based on your previous opinion. So is there a second to Mr. Duffy's motion to add shared services as a standing committee? Understand that standing committees do not have to meet every month. I'm sorry? Oh, okay. Mrs. Kumar was the second on that item. Just to be clear, because we have a standing committee, if there's no business, it doesn't meet, just like any other committee. So it's not like we're going to be charging into the mayor's office every week and demanding another meeting if there's nothing to conduct. So if we can have a roll call now, Mr. Moffett. Thank you.
So, yeah, so right now, we have one amendment, right, for the section 1 through 8, which was electronic digital edition, right? And the second one is for, what, to add a shared service committee, standing committee?
Correct.
Correct. And then the other standard.
I'll accept the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlak.
So since I've been down the line for two votes, can I ask Mrs. Albanese if her yes vote would now include this amendment to add shared services?
No, I'm gonna vote no to the requested amendment for 6. I think it's an ad hoc committee that should be appointed by the president when needed. But I don't have a problem with the committee, but not as a standing committee. So although no to that, but yes to everything else.
Right. And Mr. Bubba, is that, what is your vote? It includes no. It's yes for everything except for number 2, which was a no. Would you like to change your vote at this point?
Noted number 2 and number 6, yes to the rest.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes, the number 2, noted number 6, yes on everything else.
So number 6 is a no. Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
And Mrs. Shear?
I'm gonna say yes to everything except for the amendment for number 6. I just, I think that shared services is something we could do, pointed by the president, based on what's actually happening at the moment and who's conflicted, who's not, who's can be involved and who can't.
Okay. The, the motion carries. The number 6 was no in, for 4 in the no, so that would leave 5 in the yes. And there was only one no vote for number 2.
So both motions carry?
Both motions carry.
Okay. Thank you so much. We'll move on to the human resource items. Can I get a mover?
I'll move it.
Mrs. Putup?
I'll second.
Mr. Pavlak? Roll call of discussion. Is there any discussion on the human resource items? Or item?
Shall I call roll?
Call roll. Sorry, I'm, I'm trying to find it on the agenda. It's out of order with my cheat sheet here. Okay.
You'll get the hang of it.
I'm sorry?
She'll get the hang of it.
Eventually.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
And Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm not sure what order I'm gonna go to next. Are we back to open to the public?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we're back open to the public. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. I'll move.
Second.
Mrs. Shear, Mr. Giordano. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Come on down.
Judith Basford, a guest of Wayne, I live in Clifton, New Jersey. I just want to congratulate you, Madam President and Madam Vice President. Good luck to you and have a very successful year. So proud of you.
Thank you, Mrs. Basford.
Maureen Alex, I reside at 32 Edgemont Crescent, Wayne, New Jersey. We want to thank the members of the Board of Education for the decision to provide very, very safe services for bus, van transportation for a young 14-year-old boy on our street. I watch from my window each morning and see that happen very, very safely, which is a, a, just a gift and, and also just a human need. So we're very, very grateful. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Presidency, no one rise, I move to close.
Mr. Pavlak? Mr. Duffy?
Mrs. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to remind the group if they wanted to read the Code of Ethics by twos individually, we've done that in the past. And know if it was the pleasure of the president to do that.
Yes, it is. And we'll start at the, everyone pull out your Code of Ethics. We'll start on your end, Mr. Duffy, and work toward me.
First 2. Correct.
School, school board members shall abide by the following Code of Ethics for school board members. I will uphold and enforce the laws, rules, regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. B, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
C, I will combine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. D, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members, to see that they are well-run.
E, I will recognize the authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board.
F, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
G, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and, in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school.
All right, Stacy. H. There's only three left, so.
H, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer.
I, I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties.
J, I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
Thank you. Everyone needs to sign the form that was in their packet, um, that you've reviewed the Code of Ethics, which is required by law. Any further discussion on that before we move forward? Any questions for the attorney? We'll move on to... I don't even know what item this is. The, uh, the calendar. The calendar is next. Can I get a mover?
I move.
Suzanne Putup?
Second.
And Mr. Giordano.
Just a discussion on the board calendar?
Yes, board calendar.
We have here, I'm just looking, we have the 2 June meetings. Do we intend on making that 1?
In June?
In June.
No, typically, we need the 2 June meetings because we have to-
I'm sorry, I meant July and August.
Well, if you look at the bottom of the calendar, there is options for one meeting per month, which we typically end up doing anyway. So it's already been predetermined. If there, if anyone already has plans and wants to discuss that, now would be the time. The sooner we know, the better, for July and August.
My only concern is the meeting, for 2 meetings would be the 9th and the 23rd, and our meeting scheduled is the 16th. So if we can make the 16th one of those scheduled, if we need 2.
Trying to find the calendar. Oh, here it is. I think, I thought that's what it said.
No, we have July 16th as our scheduled meeting, but if we do want 2, it's July 9th and 23rd. So if we can move, I don't have a preference of the 9th or 23rd, but if we can just incorporate the 16th into one of those-
It says July 16th on the calendar.
Correct. But if we need 2 meetings-
You don't want July 16th?
Well, July 16th doesn't mean anything to me now, but if we need 2, eliminate the 16th and have 9 and 23, make our regular meeting 9 or 23. This way...
Well, 16th is the middle of the month, so I guess that was the, is that, is that an issue for anyone? Do you want to discuss that, Mr. Pavlak?
Historically, why we've done this, July is really not that busy of a time. You may need a second meeting in August due to hiring. So you may need to do an early meeting in August and a late meeting in August. That's why we're probably at the 20th due to hiring. So if there's any last minute hiring, if we have to add another section due to increased population in a grade level, we have that ability to do that at the 20th. And then the 20th locks in everything. There's no more adding sections to any grade level or anything because by that time, we have a pretty good census of what our numbers are in each grade level, where historically, in the past, those years, we've had to add 5th grades, 4th grades, 3rd grades. Do, a couple of years ago, we had like 30 new students coming to Latin in the summer. So that's historically why we have those dates the way they are. I, I would think you would need a second meeting in August, if anything, rather than July.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlak. The, so we're good with the August 20th? Correct? Pretty much? So the July meeting is in question? Do you, do you think-
I'll rescind everything due to the experiences to my left. It's fine. I agree with you.
Okay, very well. So is there any further discussion on the calendar? We're okay with the, what's before us? Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
This will be a new one, who's actually voted on.
We voted on it already.
It's already voted on.
Yeah, we did already.
When did we vote on it? In the A items?
The administrative items.
Okay. We, we have to talk about this cheat sheet, Mr. Moffett. Okay. Okay, we did human resources.
All right, that was number 8. Approval of the PWS regular and executive session meetings of board.
Uh, we did public comments. Okay. Well, is there any old business? No? New business? Mr. Pavlak?
First of all, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Kumar. Congratulations. You know, every January, um, is refreshing because it's something new. We get to start over. We always get a new starting point, as we do with the school year every September. And we all get a clean canvas every year. And it's up to each one of us on this dais to paint that canvas the way we want to paint it. And I look forward to working with everyone up here. And we, we need to be sure that our interest is always in the interest of the students and nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlak. Anyone else? I just want to make a few comment. Oh, go ahead, Mrs. Shear. I want to, I'll be last.
I was just gonna say, congratulations to you and Suzanne, and welcome, and Happy New Year. Let's have a great end of the year.
Thank you. Before we go, I want to make sure everyone takes their sheets, so if you could pass some down. I'm, I'm going to be staffing the shared services committee and the policy committee this year. It's in the handbook and we'll put that committee together. So when you're filling in your assignments, if you wish to be on either one of those, please add that somewhere on your piece of paper and try to turn them in this evening before you leave, if possible. That was my only comment there.
Is the policies committee gonna leave every month?
Um, we'll, we'll talk about that at the first meeting, and that'll be discussed with the chair and the members of the committee. It doesn't have to. And whoever the administrator will be, and that could even be a floater, will, that'll all be ironed out at the first meeting. So I'm, I'm foreseeing possibly quarterly. I don't know that, I don't believe, I just, many of our policies haven't even been looked at since 2009. I think we're overdue for a review. Mrs. Kumar?
There is nothing on-
No, I know, you have to write it on the back because we made those decisions this evening. So on the back, if you want to be on either shared services or policy, you'll need to eliminate that. Mr. Giordano?
For the first meeting, second meeting, which one are you splitting, the shared services and policies?
I'll, I'll let you know when I sit down and figure it out. At this point, I, I really don't know. I'm sorry. We may have to go on another night. There's no rule that says we have to only meet on the night of a board meeting. So that's up in the air. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for putting your faith in me and electing me your president. I look forward to finishing out the school year and accomplishing our goals together as a team. We can talk later about whether or not we want to have another retreat this year, if we feel we need one or not. We can do that at the next meeting. And I'm looking forward to working with everyone. And congratulations, Suzanne. Be great to work with you. And welcome, Mrs. Kumar. And Happy New Year. And thanks for all of you who came this evening. And have a safe trip home.
Good night, everyone. Happy New Year.
Move to close, Mr. Pavlak. Thank you.